We will open up the planning board meeting for Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty four. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody is recording, that is fine. You just need to let us know. All right, seeing none. We will be recording this and we will be posting it online for everyone to view as well. Seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was due to take the board this evening. First of all, that I'll start with will be Kool Lake Monastery. Kool Lake Monastery was a novelty to me, discussed last meeting, because it was going to be a special permit for the alteration expansion of a non-conforming structure, but within its own foundation. So we're tripping that threshold in our existing by law for residents. Amongst other certain requirements and parameters that we were considering at the time. However, I learned that the structure, including its foundation, was fully demolished. And thus, that particular project requires the following variances, various requests toward various setbacks. And usually when they do that, they clean up, I'm gonna call it the non-conformity of the lot as well, to give the landowner full authorization presumably to build this residential structure. So the bottom line is, once all those variances are placed, that denotes conformance on the zoning, and we will not be seeing that. I wanted to clear that up for everyone if anybody shows to follow up on that. Over at the former Anderson Nursery, I've entertained a few discussions from interested folks to establish essentially what would be a restaurant. They wished to do so by bringing in a mobile food establishment and having it members say, solidify the site such a fashion that it had the necessary permanent facilities to pass certain items. That site, as I would consider it, with the exception of a curb cut, essentially would be a blank slate in that scenario, and thus would need full permitting and site plan submittals to be prepared and provided. So that was, I'm gonna say, a little bit of a hiccup in in terms of the plans, at least as I'm interpreting that, and I do speak into the prospective applicants, but just to head up for what might be coming down the road there. I also had the opportunity to sit down and speak with a gentleman today regarding a former higher inventory. The discussion ranged across a rather wide array of possibilities, including potentially looking at zone changes, including one to the ER to allow for some mixed use at that particular piece of property. The Mavisun Corporation has begun initial work over at the Hudson Drive Solar Facility. This is currently in our building permit system, comes across my desk for a review of whether or not all the requirements have been satisfied according to that proposal. Plenty of board members may recall that there are a number of coordination items related to decommissioning, related to sharing information with border health, DPW, conservation, and fire department for hazardous and related substances that would be pertinent to its location within the Wellhead Protection District, and so on and so forth. So I recall the requirements prior to the issuance of a building permit. A number of those are outstanding. We're working through them right now. But I wanted to give everyone a heads up that the project essentially is on the path of beginning. Let's see, what else? That's all that's coming to me. That exhausts my list.
Okay. All right. Seven oh five P M. Public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? Seven ten P M. Public hearing continued for six sixty-two A College Highway.
Mr. Chair, we have received a continuance request for this meeting.
That's not how our meetings are. So. Yes, the way to do it would probably be, well, how does May run? I mean, yeah.
We have made seventh and twenty eight. Thank you.
Why don't we go get to the side? Is there anyone on seven?
The, nothing committed to this at office.
So do I hear a motion to continue public hearing for six sixty-two A College Highway at seven ten P M. On May seventh. Dave Spina, so moved.
Dick Ossinger, second.
Your role calls road by authority, I. Dave Spina, I.
Dick Ossinger, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Fortin, I.
Okay. What do we have to do on the discussion items? Are we just not gonna send over a memo that says it? Thumbs up and thumbs down?
Essentially, yes. I have, there's a microphone. I do have a report provided from DPW regarding, related to their inspection. It happened to Lebedin, if necessary, and I will look for the board to make a motion to positive recognition, recommend your acceptance. This is an admission of town. We could write up a memorandum outlining the motion.
All right. So. High points. It's surface twenty-six feet wide, all the seven hundred feet diameter, both these measurements seem to define criteria. Don't know how a layer was installed, but the tire is three and a half inches minimum. Road surface is in fair condition. Two inch mill and overlay is appropriately repaired to make marks where the road deterioration. Sidearm on one side of the quarry, none on crazy. Need to replace any, don't need any standards. And there's a few that are have some need repairs needed. Ground system appeared to be operated properly. Figure out the great drainage results, but that's not our issue. Trees. Yeah. They I don't know, is that clear? They think at all they're supposed to learn whether some died or not replaced or what?
That's correct.
There's some. Yeah, the lot management plan, I guess that would be. Let's see. We got, I guess. We better. And we deal with that. Looking also at the domain. By the, we just gotta we gotta do better. Stuff like that. Figure out a better process there, I agree. Didn't serve any concrete. Hands are bound and has provided vigor maintenance over years. And get a look at it, but I think those are the high points. Is there anything else that jumped out to you and your others?
Nope. I forget if he mentioned that we did receive an ASB Plan. Actions potentially coming out of an approval of the warrant article that would be before the town in May would include certain survey follow-up items to develop descriptions specific to how that subdivision meets for the South Long Yard through there and Granado Circle.
All right, so all in all seems to be in decent shape, nothing too significant to accept it, which they're maintaining it anyways.
This is true.
And I also get the statutory money for. So.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear a, and I'll let that go down. I mean, Jessica, if you want to take a look at it, people who do it. But I just wanted to read it in, in part because Dick is on that. So. I read in the highlights. But do I hear a motion to recommend acceptance, recommend to the select board, right, to the select board, it's gonna go, right? Or is it just for a town meeting?
For town meeting.
It doesn't have to go to the select board first?
That's correct. We'll give them a courtesy copy.
Put the recommendation to be put on the warrant. So do I hear a motion to recommend have a planning board recommendation to be put on the town warrant for the acceptance of the Corey Drive and Corey Inn is now ones.
Cody Lane?
Corey, what did I say? Cody? Corey Drive and Kobe Land. Yeah.
Dave Spina, so moved.
Dick Ossinger, second.
I'll do a roll call vote, Michael authority, I. Dave Spina, I.
Dick Ossinger, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Fortin, I.
Okay. And what did I say?
Forty.
Awesome. All right. Seven fifteen, public hearing. Oak Ridge Estates at Mortvining Road, definitive subdivision plan and stormwater management permit. Everybody's like that. Come on up. How are you, Steve?
I'm good. How are you guys? Good evening. I'm Steve Salvini, professional engineer for Salvini Associates. I'm here tonight with Terry Reynolds, who's online, and he is a professional engineer and a designer for the definitive subdivision plan. Terry and I are both here representing Oak Ridge. Our custom home builder is the applicant, and Val Shug is the preparer of that.
Let me, before you get into it, let me just read in the notice of hearing. And then I'll let John, do you have anything electronic?
Absolutely.
So I'll get, let him get that started. All right, so notice of public hearing Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven fifteen P M. Via Zoom in an all-announced hearing room, four fifty-four College Highway. Notice is hereby given pursuant to master and laws, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one T, master and laws, chapter forty A, section eleven, and under chapter three fifteen of the town staff, the bylaws of the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven fifteen P M. Via Zoom in at Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway, Suffolk, Mass., on an application by Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders, Inc. For a definitive subplan, definitive subdivision plan and stormwater management permit for property located at Mortvining Roads on R forty. The property is shown on current access map, one sixty-five parcel one point one. Zoom information is provided. The applicant proposes to create a twenty-eight lot subdivision in accordance with the bylaws of the town of South, which chapters one eighty-three, one eighty-five, and three fifteen. Details regarding the application may be reviewed by contacting the town planner, John Goddard, in his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated by authority chairperson, Southland Planning Board. Okay. This is Salvini, you're the four issues.
Okay. Thanks for getting rid of Mr. What I think I'd like to do is just, we came in with the preliminary plan. Just go over a review of that. There are minor changes, very minor to that, so it is substantially the same plan. And John, if you can flip to the, the overall.
If I could.
If you could. So we recall the properties on the east side of Mortvining Road. Just north of the Connecticut line. The original property was eighty-two acres.
Yeah.
And we have subsequently taken out some A and R lots, so the total parcel is around seventy-six acres that we're doing. You can see that.
Mortvining Road is here, and we have a proposed barrel lane that comes around and moves out. Off of that, we have three small cul-de-sacs. There are twenty-seven, twenty-eight lots in this subdivision. All the lots are there's a couple that are sixty thousand rand money, but everything else is larger than the minimum requirement of sixty thousand square feet. All of them have large punish. So the other is that we have three stormwater management areas. There's one, stormwater one, stormwater two, and then stormwater three is right here. The only changes that they made with this were for lots seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and I think twenty, where when they did the perk test, they kind of drifted a little bit, so we had to modify the sidelines of those lots to accommodate for the perk test, being changing in front of, and those lots are still way above the minimum requirement. So that's basically the the review of what we went through, some of that you probably all remember. We just received the comments back from different departments and haven't had a chance to digest that yet for this meeting. Oh, right. And, and to return the favor, I sent our I sent the waiver requests to you. And I don't know if you want to go over those now, or you want to review them and do this at another time.
Yeah, I would put it, you know, if go over through everything, even if it's just high level tonight, and so that we get a sense and we can kind of look more at what we need to look at, and folks here can hear it.
Sure. We didn't really want to address the comments because
Understood.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. So the first waiver request would be for the requirement is one benchmark per every five acres, which is kind of old school. And I might have been a little snarky in my response because surveying technology has advanced faster than the pace of regulatory changes. So one benchmark for five acres, it's better to have two per street from a surveyor standpoint, rather than one for every five acres. Divide that by into seventy-six, and how many benchmarks you can have out there to be kind of settled. So with today's technology, you don't need that many benchmarks to do what we have to do. The second one is for covenants, deed easements, and restrictions applying to the area proposed to be subdivided, we request to defer the requirement to a point prior to getting a building permit. Once the plan is, we don't want to get deed restrictions and covenants recorded and on place prior to the subdivision being approved. So once it's approved, unless I'm misreading or misinterpreting it, once the, once the subdivision is approved, then we would go forward with recording all the covenants and easements and all that sort of stuff. In my mind, it seems to make sense, but you guys can make that choice.
Yeah, and that's we could figure that out, but that, we, that's what we were just kind of talking about is, is we gotta sort of improve that process in the bylaw itself, but we can, you know, probably have it into the decision, in any decision, to sort of set out what that process is. At least for your subdivision, whether it changes when we go forward. But just get some sort of certainty, and that does kind of make sense. At least in my mind, so, but we'll play through that and, and get a reasonable.
The other one was for sidewalks. We talked about this before. Instead of having sidewalks on both sides, we're gonna put sidewalks on the outside of the road, so you'll have a sidewalk. Somebody can actually walk the entire perimeter of the roads.
On the outside, meaning top, basically, as you look at this plan?
So it would start here and go up and around and follow the outside over the road. Rather than, and then this becomes kind of a waste of time, and we have a heck of a lot of sidewalk. Or somebody coming out and just crossing, and they can walk the whole subdivision on one sidewalk. And just eliminating a sidewalk on the interior portion.
Okay.
So that's the idea.
Yep. Understood.
This one is kind of, the requirement regulation three fifteen dash twelve B requires plan scales of one inch equals forty. And we haven't one inch equals sixty, so you have, you can see more of the lots. If we did one inch equals forty, and somebody's looking at the plan, they wouldn't know where they were in the in the general location of it, because the lots are so big, and one inch equals forty would it wouldn't look good. So one inch equals sixty, we can get more of the lots on one sheet. There are four sheets for the definitive plan, so we can get lots that shows where those are in the world relative to the subdivision. Centerline staking. We're looking to get that way because the, the roads have been cleared of trees already, and there's no major grade changes. We have cuts and fills, but nothing really extraordinary. So you can literally go out there and walk the road where it's cleared, and that's where the road's gonna go. So just trying to save time and money, and if we don't have to stake it out, you can still, you can still basically walk the street and see where it is.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the, the other one is the open space, and in, in the printout, I, I copied the open space section three fifteen dash eighteen for definitive. And it says the planning board shall require a plan showing a park or parks suitable be located for playground or recreation purposes, or for providing light and air. The park shall not be unreasonable in area in relation to the land being subdivided and to the prospective uses of such land. The board may appropriate may, the board may by appropriate endorsement on the plan, require that no building be erected on such park or parks without approval for three years. The big one is the next sentence, a suggested formula of ten percent of the total land area, not including wetlands, is how your regulations states for the size, and then no grades in excess of twenty-five percent. So what we had talked about before was that we made very large lots. Lot, lot number four that goes off of County Road is eleven point two acres, eleven point three acres rounded. Lot twenty-one has seven point two four acres, which is off of Stellar on the south end, and then lot twenty-six has three point one nine acres. And in Stormwater Basin One, we have the total area of six acres, and then we took out the wetlands, and what was left for an open space calculation was three point seven two acres. So that one little open spacer, we want to put in some birdhouses, and we had talked, I think Marcus at the time had suggested putting benches in so you could sit and watch it, which makes sense. But that three point seven two acres is almost half, it's forty-eight percent of the seventy-six acres. So with just that one little one little spot, we have half of it, and then the rest of those large lots are basically gonna
Yeah, but they're not protected. I mean, they're
I understand. Yeah.
What would you say the percentage is if it's not ten percent? What's the total? Do we know what the total percentage is if it's not meeting the one?
Well, it'd be seven point six acres. It's seventy-six acres, so ten percent would be seven point six acres.
No, but what, what do you, that's it? So less than half.
It's a little under half, right? But as we had discussed at the preliminary, we felt that by creating larger lots, not going with the flexible, but we wanted to create larger lots, which gives everybody more elbow room, which gives everybody the sense of openness, and it's just our feel that we think that would be sufficient. And that's for you guys to mull over and discuss. I'll go to the next one. Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I know you're not answering that. You're digesting. The next one is section three fifteen twenty-six for shade trees. Requesting a waiver and reduction of the size from four inch caliber down to a two inch caliber. Now, I know there's a landscape architect here, and, but I also grew up, my grandfather had a nursery, and so I balls and burl at a lot of trees, and I think a four inch tree, a smaller tree will take better. It's easier to transplant a larger tree, larger ball, and sometimes they get a little root bound wherever. And we just think that a smaller tree has a better chance of survival than the larger tree does when you're transplanting. And again, that's, you can discuss that with your resident professional. Okay, and the last one is my bad, I didn't pick up on this. I should have, the the project in the SWIP is broken into phases, phase one, two, three, and four. And I didn't show them on the plan, so when we come back in again, which we will be I will have those different phases shown on the plan, but essentially, what he wants to do is make sure I got this right, Paul. Phase one would be coming in up here to Max Drive, so you've got these lots here. Phase two would be up into Stellar Drive. Phase three would be along to here to a point somewhere here, and then the last state would be out there. All right, that'll be clearly deleted on the plan when we come back in, but what that leads us to is a waiver for the bond, instead of a bond on the total property, I'd like to just get a bond on the phases as they come. And that is the list of the waivers.
Does that mean there's the, the streetlight waiver that was called?
Yeah. Crap, forgot that. Well, we'll be back, so I'll add that waiver in in the next one, but we're basically gonna look for a waiver for the none of the other subdivisions have street lighting along them, so, and out in the country there would look kind of silly, but this one lit up like a you know, Randy Brown, director of DPW, is asking for lighting at the intersection. And maybe we could compromise. I, I was suggesting to Val a little while ago that he's probably gonna have a sign up that says Oak Ridge Estates, you know, and if that sign is lit up, and then a sign on the south entrance, same thing lit up. Because I don't think the people across the street are gonna want a streetlight there. I mean, that's a, that's all there aren't, or there aren't any streetlights out there. So to all of a sudden
All, all our streets in town have a, have a streetlight at the intersection for a reason.
Okay.
To highlight the intersection itself.
Oh, okay.
That's a, that's a pretty racy thoroughfare right there. I live on Mortvining.
Okay. Oh. Well, it's technically not in the waiver request.
Fair enough.
Good point.
All right. Anything else you'd, before we?
No, unless Terry has something he wants to chime in on. Terry, wait.
I'm, I'm here if anybody has any questions, if you want me to go over any of the stormwater, any of the other aspects, I'm glad to do that.
All right. Do we have comments on the stormwater?
We do.
What do we have?
Stormwater, we have border health feedbacks saying they have favorable recommendation, and then comments from my desk. I have some information to spare as committed for me from the fire, from the fire department.
Oh. What did you say, Paul? All right. So. You all set?
I am.
And obviously you can jump in after if there's things you need to comment on, but all right, so comments, we have border health. Discuss the project with Discuss the project with a meeting on April fourth, given the lot sizes and completion of protests for all twenty eight lots of favorable recommendation was given for the project. Alright, so that's. Oh. Um. These comments. Are what was sent over to Steve that they're gonna address. Okay, as well as these?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, um. Are these the same things or do you have?
No. It's fair. With overlap, maybe uh there may be some coincidence.
Hmm.
I'm trying to spell Randy's right, look, because I'm being thorough.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. I'm sorry, I should do something for that. Okay. Alright, um. I'm gonna just give them the side of them. They're available if anybody wants to look at them. I'm gonna defer on it. We'll talk a lot of them in depth just so that it, I think it's, I think it's. Um. More productive to. Discuss them with your having a opportunity to look at them and process them and have feedback on them, and then we you can have a more intelligent discussion rather than me just reading them into the record, so. Since we're probably gonna be doing that anyways, when you have your response to them, um, we'll just kind of do it one time rather than multiple times. Um, but there's certain.
If it's okay, I'd like to, you know, work. Uh, you know, coordinate with Randy. On on his comments and um there's a little back and forth to go there.
Oh, no, absolutely. And you know, I suspect um a good chunk of it will probably be resolved before the next meeting. Um, and so um. You know, but we'll we'll sort of do a more. Thorough review of the comments and responses and what's been resolved next meeting and that'll. You know, rather than sort of repeating it twice. Um, but that that would be my expectation that a lot of those would be resolved. Um. Alright, but I but I what I was gonna say is anybody obviously who wants to look at them. They're available at the Town Planner's Office, um. You know, the board has access to them as well, so. Um, alright, anything from the board? No, yes, okay. Um, any uh town officials have any questions or comments? Um, hold on one second, sir. Are you a town official or?
No.
Okay, or I'm sorry, behind you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm uh I'm going around again on the south side.
Alright, hold on one second. Let me just make sure that there's no one uh town officials here. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I. You're sitting right in front of me and I just look at behind you. Um, gee, go ahead.
Yeah, gee, do you recall when I did in there, Joe, economic development? Well, this wouldn't pertain to economic development, but I do have a concern or question is is the diameter of the full stack too large enough to accommodate a whole school bus. Or turnaround for a whole school bus?
They meet the minimum requirements under the subject of control.
Yeah, um. I mean, I would. First of all.
I would proffer that the school bus would probably.
I would say.
Pull in at one entrance and loop out back onto Mortvining to then head back.
Yeah, I think. Any call sex.
The chance of that.
For two, three houses. I mean, that just seems unlikely for anyone, but I they. Here's what I was gonna say is. I mean, fires looking at it for. The ability of fire trucks to move around there. I suspect that it's gonna have some degree of crossover with school bus. If a fire truck can have. Maneuverability there, but.
I brought up that point because I've been associated or witnessed the Ole Miss that go in where the school buses have to park out on the street because. And then the all uh students have to come out of there, walk out of the development just to get to the school uh to the school bus, so they can pull over there. And but then backing back out into traffic and whatnot and just as a point for, you know, implement whether you got. Four, five, four or five houses. Couple of kids, you know, two point three kids when we're packed up.
Yeah.
Coming out and they have the truck, you know, truckers from the end of the full sack to get to the bus and. That was my only point to.
No, understood. And I and to be fair, I suppose I don't know the rules on um. Right, like kindergarten. Um, those obviously are much more. Uh, they stop much more frequently. There's not as much walking that is allowed for kindergarten students. I don't know, though.
Yeah, I would imagine school buses would have a loop rate, so the school bus would just go around kids.
I know that's what I would do.
Right.
But. Um, but. Alright, um, any other um town officials have comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may relay uh Chief Stephen Owens's.
Yeah.
Initial comment.
Yeah.
Uh, so he continued, he is continuing to work through uh development of formal comments, but they did want to share that. Uh, two fire systems are likely to be. Uh, required. Uh, for this particular subdivision. In order to provide adequate resources, so give the number of houses and the location.
This is a a question up, you come up Nichols and Hill Road. There's a dirt road. Isn't there a sign that says firepower and isn't there firepower down there or? No.
The I I did inquire about other resources that may be nearby, other shared resources. Uh, the only ones that I'm gonna call at a uh. Of reasonable distances are dedicated to those specific subdivisions.
Okay.
So as we go forward towards Nichols and Hill Road, I think beyond, I'm gonna call it the.
The range.
Distance.
Yeah, okay.
And that's been, just so you know, it's been pretty consistent with any new subdivisions that have been approved. They've wanted to start in there.
And then within the developer.
Yeah, so.
Is what it is?
I um. I will be coordinating with the the fire chief uh on that. There are, I'm gonna call it, there's a developing picture. Ultimately, in a subject of regulations, uh they have the authority um to dictate the premises, so on and so forth. Uh, there's a developing uh picture of. How they would like to um see these managed. Um, so I'll give um all those details since I have.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Um. Anything else from?
That's it for the moment.
Um, any other town officials? Alright, any public comments, sir? Just uh name and address before you speak.
I'm concerned about the runoff.
Just your name and address, please?
Why you coming off?
And what's your address?
Fifty four East Street, Grand Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And uh, my property adjoins that and the water is gonna run down there. I'm wondering if they're gonna have any retention bonds or something to slow the water flow down.
In uh, just so that I can, in what direction are you to your property?
Mine is on the south side.
Just just this, he owns a sliver between the property and Connecticut.
Okay.
He's actually in Connecticut, but.
Yeah, yeah.
If you wanna call up the plan again, John, I can show them.
Oh, of course.
I I can go over that if you'd like.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, you got it.
Can I share my screen?
Sure, sure, Terry.
Yeah, go for it.
I didn't tell. I told Mike, I didn't give him privilege. There we go. How about not, Terry?
Yeah. Okay, so. This is the grading and erosion control plan. And so basically, this, the sub- the subdivision has a complete stormwater system. That basically has three. Bio retention basins, one here. One here. And one here. Um, and basically, the the way it currently runs off the land is. The water comes across and ends up coming down in the lowland area through these wetlands. And discharges down here. Um, so this has been designed so that there's no increase. And any of these southern points. Were up through the one hundred year event. Um. So basically, everything that's collected in the roadways. Are sent into these bio retention basins. Here and here and here. Um, and then any overflow comes out. And runs over land through the wetland like it did originally. Um, and this has all been evaluated. One of. Um, Randy Brown's comments was that um. Didn't go quite large enough on the storm event. Uh, in Southwick, you require a. To evaluate up to the ninety percent. Of the very highest range of a hundred year event. Um, so that has been done and re reevaluated so that. We are assured that um no increase in runoff is gonna happen with this. As a matter of fact, it'll be decreased once the development is complete.
Alright, um, any other public comments? Why? See anything? Okay. Um, anything else on the board before we? Move this to another day? Um. Time frame for you to get stuff. Responded to?
What do you think, Terry?
Um, I've addressed most comments already.
Okay, so we'll go for the next available meeting.
Okay. Uh, which would be the twenty third?
That's correct.
And.
At the moment, seven seventy one College Highway is our only.
Alright, so why don't we put this at seven ten? So do I hear motion to continue the public hearing for um. Oak Ridge Estates at Mortvining Road to. Seventeen, seven, ten P M on April twenty third.
Dave's penis so moved. Jacob Singer, I, second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote by the authority. I, Dave's been I.
Jacob Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Just the four and I.
Alright.
I said it.
All set.
Alright, thank you all.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Alright, seven thirty, public hearing, zone change petition, two thirty three South Ole Miss Streets.
Everybody's moving faster than I'm writing.
I'll take your time. I'm not, I'm not gonna stop that part.
Let's. Be, uh. Mr. Levesque reached out to me and let me know that he was going to be. Uh, coming in hot on this one, uh, seeing as how we are. Ready to proceed. He's not in the room or online at the moment.
Yeah, we can go to the next one.
Um.
Fair enough. Second phone, if you will.
Fair enough.
Um, alright. Seven. Forty. Public hearing proposed amendments to chapter one eighty five, section thirty eight, short term rentals. Notice to public hearing Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty four, seven forty P M. Via Zoom and in the land use hearing room, four fifty four College Highway. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section five, that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday. April ninth, twenty twenty four, seven forty P M via Zoom and in the land use hearing room, Town Hall, four fifty four College Highway. South of Mass to consider amending the code of the town of Southwick, Chapter one eighty five, Section thirty eight, short term rentals. Including but not limited to amending A, certain documentation requirements, and B, timeframes associated with the appeal processes. Zoom information is provided. Details regarding the proposed amendment may be reviewed by contacting the Town Planner, John Goddard, at his phone, and email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter. Should appear at the time and place designated by the authority, such as the Department of the Land and Board. Mr. Guy.
I'm board numbers and. Help the numbers in attendance. Let me just set this up. If it's my own screen for a moment, there we go. Okay. Zoom in a little bit. What we have before us is. Draft. Or article as well as the full. Shoreline amendments to the. Bylaw as. Provided to the planning board by. Bring Mark Beglin at Beglin West. If uh it pleases the board, I'm just going to go to the pertinent changes of the short term local bylaw.
Very pleased.
To the please of the chair. I got three eyes and one one. Um, so this uh.
Uh-oh, he went up.
Yes.
The justification, the reasoning?
No, I understand. The justification for why the changes need to be made. I don't understand the justification for. Doing it in this manner. Why are we not just? Having a warrant article to. Um, change language in section. Thirty eight, thirteen and thirty eight fifteen and be done with it. Why do we have this whole? Fine, regular laws.
I did not um anticipate ending any such conversation, however, that's a a very sensible. Uh, suggestion that we pull out the specific changes and keep the uh changes as it is on the warrant, I mean, warrant uh manageable.
That's all, I mean. And we don't have to do this sort of as passed at the last year's annual time. I mean, it's passed as part of the bylaws, right? It's just. See if the town's office will vote to. Um, change chapter one eighty five, section thirty eight. According to town of Southwick and. That's all, sorry. I mean, I think that's all we have to do. No, am I wrong?
No, that makes perfect sense to me.
I mean, that basically this exists. Yeah, now we're doing these changes in thirteen and fifteen. And so that's all we should leave the law on the warrant article thing.
I agree, and I'm happy to.
I just wanted to make sure that this was on a.
Most eventually.
Mark thing that you wanted this whole thing in here like this for some.
I cannot find any reason why.
Just make sure you don't miss any of them, like section eighteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't say eighteen, but yes, you're right. Um. Yeah, so thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, is that right? Was that the three?
The triple checkers.
I mean, it'd be easier to see them in actual.
Big, the big three, right?
But yeah. I think it's thirteen, fifteen, eighteen. Um. Okay. So why don't we just go through those and then we can come back to the language and everything, figure out the others.
Fantastic.
Okay, you're on to the team.
Uh, yes. Got the current section thirteen complaint process violations. Suggested. Changes to the sentence begins with unfiling of a potential violation. The zoning enforcement officer or designated shall serve notice of the violation upon the owner of the short term rental and file a copy of such notice for the town clerk.
Sure, the town clerk will be there with that. Okay. Um.
That's the same energy uh in that uh first division reflected in item D.
Yeah.
Then you want to be a field process. Some noted uh. Concerns about discrepancy with. Um, time frames. So we are changing from um. The family report field, we reduced it to fourteen days. Uh, this has just changed to thirty days, but the date, the decision is filed with the town clerk. Enforcement action is filed with the town clerk. And shall be heard within sixty five days of receipt of the note by the Board of Appeals of such appeal application petition filing.
Okay.
Section eighteen, second.
I think that needs to be just, that's just part of the warrant article.
Uh, you are correct. That should just be. Okay, thank you. I'm getting ready to turn myself on. That's what I'm getting ready to do.
Um. Alright, now, so why don't you just swing back up to the, well, first of all. We don't have to do it right now, but I would say that just erase every other section. That doesn't have.
Yeah, there is a revision bar at the bottom of section five. I don't know if that's.
How about that thing?
It just makes other just go. Alright. And you'll be drawn back up to the top, um. Think of the word, uh, what this needs to say. And see if the town of Southwick will vote to. Um, amend. You can. Well, no, you're gonna need that tracking to write amend, right, so we can see that. Or no, 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 mind, you don't need to, no, no, because this is the warrant art, you have to even accept all of them, okay? Um, see if the town of Southwick will vote to amend chapter one eighty five, section thirty eight. You can delete that whole line of pass. Why is that?
Uh, it looks like it just came out, yeah, I have no idea. I will, I'll be blunt here, uh, because I just did a very quick comparison one to the other, I'm sure whoever typed it up. Um, and assisting attorney Beglin.
Yeah, I'm putting capitals, yeah.
Now I've done it. Oh, no, really don't.
Alright, Southwick can further. Town authorized. I think that's right, right?
I I've been so natural, yes. You got out the job, alright.
Do I hear, uh, or any comments, um, oh, Karen, I should probably do that, uh, any comments from the board? Any town officials have any comments? Alright, any, uh, Marcus, you're sure, this is your last chance. Actually, no, you're a member of the public now, any public comments?
I don't question you, Terry, Jeff.
Alright, um. Alright, do I hear a uh motion to close the public hearing?
Dave's penis so moved.
Take a singer, second.
The roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been I.
Take a singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Just the fort and I.
Alright, do I hear a motion um to? Propose a warrant article um to amend chapter one eighty five, section thirty eight as. Uh, indicated on this. Draft one.
Dave's penis so moved.
Take a singer, second.
Roll call vote by the authority, I.
Dave's been I.
Take a singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Just the fort and I.
Okay, so that you go, um. I said just. Change plugs and let it ready to go. Um, fine, that takes care of that, seven forty five, public hearing continued. Any more review and discussion of the Southwick twenty forty's master plan final draft consideration of its adoption.
There we could just one moment and go.
Yeah, you take as much time as you need.
Well, he's gonna exclude us, but I give you all the time you want, what's going on in that end of the table?
I want to know the same thing.
That's probably the proper thing to do.
You sure Rob knows he's supposed to be here? And he's sure Rob knows supposed to be here?
Yeah, he's, uh. We're in a couple different hats this week. Uh, alright, ladies and gentlemen. I shared. Refresh links to the. Latest and greatest South of twenty forty master plan. And alongside that, some notes that I uh developed in the review of the comments generated when Mr. Premier was here in person. Uh, in December and then our subsequent uh list provisions that we developed. And I related, there are a few minor. Uh, provisions I think need still to be implemented, and we can talk about those. Um, and and exposed the thought of the. The planning board has the opportunity to. Move contingent upon. Certain uh final changes.
Okay. Your sheet that you sent around. With the revisions.
Yes.
Was that? And we talked about the first ones?
We only talked about them in person, I would. What's, you know, kind of, I feel the chain of reaction is what was, or what resonated most strongly with me.
Do you have a um? A copy of the master plan that I'm, I guess, is, is there a revised version or? That includes these or are just, it's not done yet?
I have.
Ending us.
The uh, the latest and greatest is consistent with what we saw about a little over two weeks ago. That was shared with us, um, so it does not reflect those three. Items that I highlighted. That remained to have received some attention.
So it includes everything that is in this revision list?
Yes, it has a check mark yet next to it and next to.
And this is on me, I'm looking. On an iPad and a computer.
So I can bring a.
So I can't.
The notes up, that's easiest.
Yeah, when I look at it, I'm not seeing, I'm, this is all.
No, that's fine.
Yes, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Uh, oh wait, here we go, nevermind, that one worked, everybody.
Okay.
The last one was, didn't have a whole bunch of. Okay, so it's checked. It is done.
I was informed that it was.
And if it's not checked, we need to still talk.
Sure.
Or?
Just, I think we're talking about relatively minor items and I think there's one uh called deletion that I can uh give the full word enough.
Alright, so why don't you, I think the easiest way to do this so that people can understand what the hell we're talking about, is just pull up the master plan. For the most revised version, I guess. And um, let's just go to those specific things and then we can kind of have it on screen, we can look at them in the talk.
Okay, maybe just one.
Yeah.
I'm saying, we're moving along so slowly, I can't close documents fast enough. A little bit.
It's nice to have a plan, but you get punched in the.
Uh, okay, we're sharing, we're alive, uh, so let's go to that first.
I think page forty six is the.
So this one is a little nebulous, this was a discussion item, so. Once back to um, that is. Uh, no, I'll deny that all the discussion, the development implemented tax incentive program for existing businesses with the aim of creating new and well paid. Local employment opportunities.
I'm sorry, I I barely hear most of you guys, because most of the time, and John, I can say, but you speak with him, trying to point you to the face.
It's, it's a, you know what, it is a handicap and I never speak over my, through the microphone, so, let's try again.
If you can't, if anybody can't hear, just jump in, that's, we, because we want you guys to hear, so, um, dump it.
Let's try it again, so this particular action item. Uh, says develop and implement a tax incentive program for existing businesses. With the aim of creating new and well paying local employment opportunities, uh, the comment that was generated. Relates to the lead party identified um in this draft as the planning board. And was the opinion of the planning board that that would not be the right platform from which to launch. A tax incentive program?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the. Uh, let me just pull it back on here. Economic is in a supporting, I think it's probably. I mean, because it's develop and implement, it's probably the select board that is. The lead party on that. Hell, I'm not even sure we need to be in there. Maybe, where are the other ones, so, but we're probably a supporting party on that one. I think.
I don't think so.
But I think it's select board because it's development and plan, so it's not E D C. May very well have a decent role in it, but it's not ultimately going to be E D C as the lead party because they can't. So, I would switch it that way. Any thoughts on that? So then we have. Number three there is in the section two.
That's correct, so let me just go over to page forty six.
Go back to the executive summary after two days.
Yes, I think we'll find out the same language.
Okay, this is actually uncovered.
Our darn post slip, um, so this comment uh was born out of discussion about uh Southwick not having a. Different tax rate between its uh, you know, commercial and industrial uses, and our residential properties. Uh, Mister Chair, I believe you made the clarification that that's not an unusual circumstance. Um, when looking at other uh communities across the Commonwealth.
Other towns.
Other, I was gonna say of similar size, but they didn't get there, other towns.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and so I think there was some discomfort with the language that was specifically chosen in that paragraph. Under tax structure. Particularly part that says the average single family tax bill is comparable to other nearby towns, but significantly less than the similar bedroom community of Long Meadow. Long, excuse me, here's a sentence, commercial, industrial and personal property tax rates in Southwick are the same as residential, making them relatively quite low for the region. This has undoubtedly been a draw for the light industrial uses in town.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be appropriate. To say, instead of for the region. Also, I don't think you need relatively quite low, I think that that's redundant, but making them. Um, relatively low as compared to. Um, neighboring. Communities, I think it's probably, right, because we have. I mean, if you run through West Springfield, Westfield, Agawam. Um, obviously Springfield, all have. Different rate, um. Uh, I may be missing some, I can't remember, right, but, I'm sorry, I'm doing it, um, so, um. My understanding, just so you know, Jean, and I don't know if you've looked at it, but. If you look at the tax, because we've had this discussion, I think, before you. Um, we're coming to these, um, so the tax rates. Uh, if you look across the Commonwealth, most towns, or at least organized as towns. Have same commercial residential tax rate, it is cities and. I'm trying to remember the exact term, it's like. It are cities or have a city form of government, right, or. I forget the exact way, but like, so like Agawam, right, it's considered the town of Agawam. But they have, right, so they have a city form of government, um, so, any of those tend to have different. Commercial and residential tax rates, so, um, I think Southwick is pretty consistent for. Towns, but because of where we're located, you have a bunch of neighbors who have different. Tax rates, so I think saying. Making them relatively low compared to. Neighboring. Communities is probably appropriate, is that sound right? Okay. Alright.
Alright. Let's see.
And and that can be just changed in the executive summary if that's the same.
I'm sorry, do we do?
No, we don't need to go back.
It's the segment.
Yeah.
Alright, uh.
And obviously seventy one, it's just a. Right, I mean, we can go look at it.
Seven, did I just?
Page seventy one, the historic.
Chance of relocation.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yes, I I went right past it, that's my favorite.
Does anybody really want to spend some time on that one?
It's too much already.
I'm saying, you know, relax, relax, I guess.
Okay, page one twenty one, actually.
That weren't enough transportation.
I'm sorry?
That's where it ended up in the transportation section.
Uh, yes, so. Um, I'm. Uh, actual question, format issue, oh, yes.
I want to see the, um. I mean, do you have a thought, John, on where that goes, or does anybody on the board have a thought on where to put that? It probably doesn't belong under transportation, that seems kind of silly to me, um, I mean, it sort of encompasses all the chapters, but is there one that it's sort of more? Properly. Fits under than say transportation. I mean, it may just be under land use, right? It's not, it's not a standalone, it sort of encompasses all the chapters, but I think if you're gonna pick one, I. But I think if you're gonna pick one, I maybe just put the first one, right? Well, that's a goes under economic development, but I'm not sure what that's the place for. Yes, it's sort of standalone, right? Because when you're here on the summary here, it just is at the very end.
The end of the executive summary, standalone.
And so, but I mean, I, I don't know. I would. Probably put it in the first one, if we like.
Even into languages.
Did it go at the end of the introduction?
That's underneath the planning process.
Yeah.
With your plan overview.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
And then plan, the section would be plan overview and then plan implementation and then put that recommendation in total.
Yeah.
Look there.
Something like that. Is it discussed in one of the sections, not in the?
I don't believe that same action replicated elsewhere. For greater depth of discussion.
I mean, here's the, I guess one of the reasons why I was thinking to put it in the first section. Was because the master plan implementation committee is listed as a. Lead or support party on some of these things, right? And so. It hasn't even been. Created at this point in the master plan. When you're already seeing that. Terms, Adrian.
I would put it in the front underneath the planning process, give an explanation, quick, short blurb about what it is. And this is the. This is the establishment. This is who the lead party is, supported parties.
And processes. Sorry, that's part of the executive. That's the introduction.
And then it says planning process and. Those are a bit more detailed.
But it. You're taking it out of the action items.
Wow.
I'm not saying it needs to be there. I'm just saying you're taking it out of the action items. I'm not.
We're creating a new action.
Not really, if you're not.
Okay. All it is is a little box of those actions.
Here's, um.
All right, I'm gonna convene the committee.
Um, yeah, I find that because it's. I guess in part because. That's already. I don't know if it's definitely already created, but it will be created in a more formal manner at some point soon. So. Um, that's probably fine. So. I guess it just gets taken out and sort of.
Well, it it could flow very easily there from plan overview where it says the committee also recommends short and long-term actions that will bridge the gap between Southwick today and the Southwick envision in 2040. The first of, and most important of these actions is, bam, action one point one, the creation and implementation of a master plan of information. Okay?
I agree.
I'm sorry, just to be abundantly.
Blah, 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 blah.
Page.
What page number was that?
Eleven, under plan overview.
All, all the nights are different.
Keep going, keep going. There it is.
Gotcha.
So just take that.
I mean, it's, it's almost written, or yeah.
It's, yeah, no, that's fine.
Beautiful.
All right. Okay, and then one twenty-nine. I guess the last one, is that right?
Yes, uh, so this right here, there's a sentence that's cut off. Let me grab that sentence and read clever one. Sentence begins, "A focus on building energy efficiency has proven a win-win strategy for reducing energy costs and creating local jobs." That's the rest of the sentence that is, um, missing. From that particular. Paragraph highlighted on the screen.
All right, anything else we need to? Deal with on this?
Those were.
What was the? Sorry, go ahead.
Sounds okay. Those were the only, we call it outstanding. That is specific to content.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else on the board on that? Any other? Any town officials? Or any questions or comments? Jean, go ahead.
Where is this available?
Uh, if you go to the, it's the most updated version on links to the.
I would have to double check myself.
So either. Whether it's the original version or sort of the one with pretty minor revisions, you go to the planning board webpage.
Okay.
There is a. Um, um. Whatever you want to call it on the left-hand side, it'll say Southwick master plans. Click on that. They'll have the three master plans. One from the sixties, one from the nineties that was never adopted and that's. Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Um, any, um, public comments? Okay. So, um. Is there still potentially some minor things or no? Are we good?
I think with the exception of, we're gonna call it the inevitable. Abolition or end of that get ended up in the end, we are the rich thesis.
All right. Um, do I hear a motion to close the hearing then? Dave's being so moved. Do I hear a second?
Jessica Fortin, second.
Fantastic.
We have Richard.
Go through a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, Dave's being aye.
David Suton, aye.
Jessica Fortin, aye.
Is Dave there? No?
He's no.
Pass him a little bit.
There, but he's not home.
All right. So, um, do I hear a motion to, um. Adopt the. Twenty forty master plan. Um, as we finally.
Sixty-year. And Jamaican, yeah.
Uh, as we've finally added it here tonight. Uh, Dave's being a so moved.
Second.
Your roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye. Dave's being a aye.
David Suton, aye.
Jessica Fortin, aye.
All right. Got that? Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Harman.
Thank you.
Good job, Marcus.
You were, you were just coming here until we got that adopted, right? Is that the plan? Now you're out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I go to Disney?
All right.
It's a Disney.
Um, eight o'clock, public hearing continued. Proposed amendments to chapter one eighty-five, section twenty-eight, non-conforming uses structures and lots. Ben. Um, who wants to start? John, Jessica?
Go for it, man.
I'm just driving. Close.
Oh, yeah, it's fine. We think it's fine. I just didn't know we wanted to.
No, I appreciate that. That's great. Love the fact of the basis. See, you know, technically their capabilities. Oh, let's see, one of these, one of them. There. Stay. Okay, everyone. Shared via Zoom and print it up in front of you is a. Draft. I'll use the word reconfiguration. This edits to one eighty-five, twenty-eight, non-conforming lot structures and uses. Not limited to the rear revision of those three words. Uh, description there. Uh, for everyone's information, what's highlighted in blue, um, are, in my opinion, the substantive. Uh, changes that I want to drive everyone's attention to are minor adjustments elsewhere. Big picture, uh, we've taken our current. Bylaw and have now broken down to be specific so that if you are talking about. A non-conforming use, a non-conforming lot or a non-conforming structure, uh, if the logic flows, um. More easily to those specific items as opposed to trying to break it up in some of the ancient and the language. Let's dig in. The first subsection for non-conforming lots maintains some of the existing language. But folds in a single lot exemption for single-family, two-family uses. That is rooted in. Rooted in state law. But then adds information about. Making sure that any proposal under this exemption receive positive recommendation from the Board of Health. Uh, for suitability for, uh, waste and fresh water. Uh, needs as well as, uh, public safety from the fire department and state the operator, make it that they can adequately access the site. The next change I'll go through is under subsection B, non-conforming structures. Where we begin by adding some language related to. Lapsed uses. Um, I believe is at the last, uh, planning board meeting, or perhaps prior to, we explored the idea of, uh, expanding. Term. Defining when, or certainly would fundamentally be abandoned, uh, or, excuse me, yeah, so, uh, or discontinued for three years. Uh, there's additional language in here that expands. That opportunity. Um. And does not designate such a non-conforming structure, uh, and the use of it as having been. A better discontinued, uh, up to ten years. Upon finding by the planning board in a special permit area that such continued. Residential use of a non-conforming building or structure. And proposed, yeah, structural alterations will be more detrimental. Neighborhood or shall result in use and structure more in keeping with the character of surrounding properties. The same expansion type in is offered to structures that are lost, um. By, uh, some measure of catastrophe. Or misfortune. Oh, let's go to. Hold on, sure.
I'm just, so where's the? Where's the, um? In the structured one. Where's the? Uh. Limitation. On proposed operations, if something has not been. There's not, I mean, it makes it so that you can, you can do whatever you want, right? But it has, the use hasn't been discontinued for. Three years or more?
Define you do whatever you want.
Uh, yeah, and so I'm just, um. So. We've gone from, you can't. I mean, I just want, hold on, let me just find that ball phone. No, no, I got it. So the problem, so the way the old one was structured is that the only thing that could have been continued. Is the use. The only thing that the time period applied to was the use. Right? And so that if it wasn't discontinued, you could continue using it in that way. This thing is now structured to allow for alter it, so. You can maintain a building, uh, a non-conforming building or structure shall not be structurally altered, enlarged, nor reconstructed except when. The proposed alteration is to a residential use building. And provided that the lawful use of a non-conforming residential building or structure has not been abandoned or discontinued for three years. So if something hadn't, if you were, if the residential use had not been discontinued for three years or more. Under this, you don't need to go get a special permit. You know, there's no limitations on what you can do. You could add. You could add another. You could double the size of the building if you wanted to.
It would still have to pass muster through building. To make sure it was still within setbacks and all that.
You're, you're basically saying you've been. You're already non-conforming. And so. There would be no rules that apply to you because you're not performing by definition. And so what are the rules that apply to you? They can't be the setback rules and things like that because you're already not performing, right? So. What limits to your alteration are, there's none. Before it was, it had to be within the footprint and now we've gone to. There's none.
Only for a single-family home.
Agreed.
And with it, with approval from the building.
Agreed, but I'm not, that seems like a big jump from nothing to anything you want. As a building inspector is not gonna, I mean, they're just looking at.
And that was only for, this is where it came, only for residential structures. Under three years. Which was already part of their protections. That they had.
No, it's not, no, because they, before you could keep that residential, you could keep the use stress it actually.
Mm-hmm.
You couldn't do anything to the structure.
Right.
The three years has nothing to do with the structure. Now we are tying the three years to the ability to do whatever you want to the structure, not just the use. You know what I mean? And so I don't think I have a problem with. Letting people do some stuff to their house. Beyond the footprint of it. Um, but I think there's gotta be some. Limitations because you're dealing with. Completely unregulated. Changes, right? I mean, you could go to the edge of your. Property line. I mean, if you have a setback that is.
Something in my supporting document that I sent to you that, right, where that section six protection. That exists that prevents this sort of a thing.
Because like if you had a setback of forty feet and you were already into that setback, say you're like, you know, setback was thirty-five feet or something because of pre-existing non-conforming. You are, and that's just the use, but if you had a pre-exist. You are, and that's just the use, but if you had a pre-existing non-conforming structure as well, what's to limit you from keeping doing it? And I, I just thought, that's what I, the use makes sense to me because the use is a use, but when you're dealing with the structure, I don't know how you you gotta have some limitations there, think.
I think we should come back to it and move on to the rest of the document. Because, because singles become part, a part of this is that there is already built-in protection for a single-family home that we can't run afoul of. This was to provide a differential here between a residential structure that hasn't been touched in three years versus an industrial building or a commercial building that hasn't been touched. Within a certain amount of time. So that's why you have the three years, you're good, and then between three and ten, now you're coming in for a special review to make sure it's not too much of, too much of an intensification of the non-conforming structure.
All right, you know, we keep going. What do you, um, all right, so where are we going to next?
Uh, let's see, we're still in section B. Uh, added language, so we're still talking about structures. Make sure I am. Okay. Now we're sending into the contract, in this subsection, whenever a non-conforming structure has been changed to a less non-conforming structure or to a conforming structure, such structure shall not thereafter be changed to a more non-conforming structure or to a non-conforming structure, except upon finding out of planning board, special permit hearing that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or shall result in use more keeping with the character of surrounding properties than existing non-conforming structure, sorry, gee, um, uh, to the neighborhood.
So that basically uses existing language and then adds that last part.
That's cool. So now we get to into non-conforming uses. We have similar language to what we were just debating um under non-conforming structures uh regarding abandonment and discompliance of non-conforming uses. And the accommodation suggested for non-conforming residential uses. That is contingent upon navigation, uh, successful navigation of a special permit application.
Yeah, I mean, this one makes sense to me. Three years or less, if you're doing residential, you can just keep doing that and you don't need to come back for a special permit, three to ten, you have some control over that because that's a longer period of time. Um. That makes sense to me. Non-conforming use should not be shown. We need to do this, we need to get this done tonight, or?
No.
We can pick it up.
We can pick it up. I mean, my presumption is that whatever we develop, wherever we land tonight, uh, we can reach out for advice, and I think it can be approved for content. Um, it sounds possible.
But they'll have time to get it together and get another one.
So the target would be wrapping the top, uh, in a.
We're on plenty more time. This target is actually the end of March. Fair enough. Um. Okay. What, um, why? Am I, I had this side, so, um, is there a definition of a non-conforming lots? That's a non-conforming lots.
A lot that was registered and recorded prior to the implementation of zoning that now makes it a non-conforming, so a lot was created before we had four, less frontage, less than the forty thousand square foot that has required.
In the area, fair enough. Okay, so that will be.
So if it was legally in existence prior to that, which is on the land order to prove.
Just trying to think through. So why is that same language about um maybe continued not in the non-conforming lots? So I guess it doesn't matter because it's only that you have to. It's only gonna be triggered when you drink something on it, right? I'm trying to think of how, I mean, I get why it's being set up, because that's the way this has always been lots, structures, uses, right? But the lots really only gets triggered if you're going to put do a stuff, well, there's not a.
Or even the creation of a new.
I guess what I'm thinking were lots, I'm thinking empty pieces of property.
Right, which this now allows for, if it's, if it meets certain requirements for a single-family home, it becomes suitable.
So you have to have that same, the same language that says that. And basically, any lawful non-conforming lot may be maintained or may be continued. Don't you have to have that same language in that lot section too? Right, so if someone has a whatever structure on a property without enough frontage, they are technically a non-conforming lot right now, right? And so don't you have to have some language that basically says that can be continued? And I just gotta think that the lot thing is not, I'm not, uh, it, it's not you, it's not the way it's written, it's just I'm trying to get my head around the lot side, that, that, that portion of it, separating it out in the thingy like this. I just need to get my head around how the lot plays out.
Empty lot?
It's not, though. I mean, the lot part is talking about the, the feet and inches, it's talking about not having proper setbacks, or not, not, I shouldn't say that, it's not talking about setbacks because that would be the structure. Well, I don't, whatever, and maybe you can talk about that. I'm thinking that the easiest example is frontage, right? So if you had a whether it's an empty lot or whether it's a lot with a house on it or whatever in a zone that has frontage requirements and you don't have that frontage, you have a non-conforming lot. It could be empty, it could have something on it, but it's still.
As long as it's pre-approved lots.
Well, if it was built.
You couldn't just take a piece of land and call it.
Right, if you can't now go forth and create a new lot that is too small for the current zoning regulations, this is a lot that was already existent.
It would have to already be pre-approved somewhere in the past.
Correct.
And then have to conform to laws of that time.
Right, I think I'm. I mean, there are twenty, but I bet you there are lots of off of fifty-seven there, and the old houses there that are probably less than the required size or the required frontage for R twenty.
Yeah.
I bet you there are some, I just, I don't know.
Probably wouldn't be a great deal of these lots that would be still floating around town at this time. A lot of those all got swept, swooped up and doubled up and.
All those were built in the forty, probably, right?
Then there's something already on, it's not.
No, that's fine, but then bylaw comes into place, it says this is R twenty, and you need to have X frontage, X lot size, and a bunch of those properties with houses on them in those neighborhoods there are probably non-conforming lots. Right, because they don't need size and frontage. So, but they're fine, they can still continue doing what they're doing.
Which is being empty.
Well, no, no, there, those are, I mean, that's example that has houses on them, right, because that's all the stuff to the right of fifty-seven there. You're driving up from the center of town. Um. But.
I mean, there's even on across from the hill that all the kids, kids let on, there's a a house right before there that's lit like you, if you weren't looking through the trees behind this other house, there's a house there. And at this point, it's probably the, the access to it has been cut off, and now it's just an abandoned building that's been sitting there for god knows how long. If somebody came forth and said, hey, I wanted to demolish this and put a single-family home, and we're in the middle of a housing crisis and need to increase our housing production plan, if so long as there's enough room for it to meet safety and border health requirements, yes. Yes, please do.
All right. Well, I just think I need to conceptually get my head around the lot stuff and make sure I'm thinking about it the right way, from, I don't think I was when I first looked at it.
And it's very hard to separate out the three pieces because they, they interplay so much. But this is, let's look at those crazy one-offers that maybe protection from this angle and a protection from this angle.
No, you're absolutely right. All right, um. Any other board questions or comments on this? Or do we need to go through, no, we went through the whole thing, right?
Uh.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
I have in front of me, and I can send this to you after if you want to, to mull it over. When it comes to modifying um, the structure and that kind of also affects the lot, so this language here might help it make sense to you. It says that the modification would not increase the non-conforming nature. The permitting authority must make a determination affirming that the modification would not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure a lot, and therefore the building permit must be issued as of right. If the modification would increase the non-conforming nature of the structure, it must go under further scrutiny to determine whether the modification would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. And the issue lies in that in our town, the building permit authority is not necessarily the land use permit authority, and where we draw the line at letting that um initial determination, if it would increase the non-conformity, if he's gonna make it and then pick it to us or not, so that's kinda that is, so it, it makes it itchy and then especially, and then when you're trying to provide uh protection for single-family and also not run afoul of their chapter six protections.
Well, I mean, you can probably.
The sample zoning provision said the proposed alterations do not increase the maximum height of the pre-existing structure. The proposed alterations comply with setback performance or that they do not comply, so like, there's ways of looking at it and breaking it down differently if you feel like incorporating that into the bylaw, so.
How does, um, if you know, how does Kyle? If something comes in and it's pre-existing non-conforming, how's he, how does he figure that out?
Depending upon the circumstance, uh, he will consult with me and we'll chew things up and figure things out, and there are other circumstances where it's next, uh, well, what I was gonna say, where, where it's clear and that's an efficient, perhaps your answer is applicable as well.
And, and I must be, I mean, to be fair to him, I'm not sure that there's a process necessarily in place to identify these things, right? For that may not, I guess my thinking was whether you know, it can be sort of, you can't get a building permit on first blush, you either have to have the sign off from the planning board of, under that portion of the bylaw, or you will have had to go through the special permit process if, if that's gets triggered, right, so either one or the other, but it's gotta make its way to the planning board first for either just a, almost like an A and R type of sign off.
Yeah, they call that the section six binding. So whether we want that initial binding to be done or by a special permit is that's kind of what we have to write into this, we want. So you know how I, how confused I am.
Okay.
Still using the hotmail?
Uh, sure.
Call someone out like that on a recording meeting?
I didn't say that. Coolmike.com, it's not AOL.com.
Oh, you want to use my AOL? All right. Okay, um, any other board comments? I got one question, yes, just trying to wrap my head around the language here. Um, let's see, on the first page, A three A says any increase in area. Do we mean increase? Would just mean any area frontage width, yard, or depth requirements. Right, because I think that's what we're trying to say, if you got five thousand two feet, fifty feet of frontage, all the other requirements kind of go away.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly. Pull that over from another town.
MGL, MGL forty-eight. If the increase in area frontage width, yard, or depth requirements of a zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply to a lot for single, two-family residential use, so that is
just taking a. Yeah, but what's increased what?
So I suppose the, the initial increase, whatever standard there was prior to zoning, right, was establishing those dimensional constraints.
And, and note that that single lot exemption applies to the lot and the, in the use in the structure, so that's probably where the increase and all those different variables add. Yard with that.
I think the problem is in the, right, in elements of this chapter should be requirements found.
Chapter one eighty-five is our zoning bylaw, so.
Yeah, so I guess around the, what the basis of the increase is. Yeah, you're right. What's the baseline for the increase?
Right, so any, any increase, any increase of requirements of new chapter one eighty-five zoning, so any new zoning bylaw that increases requirements on these pre-existing non-conforming lots and structures does not apply to them.
Future increases?
Yeah, or, or previous ones.
Since when?
Since the, in, since the implementation of chapter one eighty-five.
Let's say that, right, any increase in yada, 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 since the implementation of or something, or since
Or something like that, or since. The initial creation, I don't.
I would. Counter, say, the, the, the since that we're envisioning here uh is under, as, as opposed to the qualifying characteristics. So what applies to that increase to really, we're only thinking about lots that conform to its, its zoning existence at the time that the lot was created. And so that further constraint.
Why don't we table that? I will take a look at this.
Yeah, so just for you, so to play, play it out for you, right now we require forty thousand square feet in the R forty. Somebody buys a lot, builds a house, and uh, forty years from now, we change it to you need eighty thousand square feet.
Sure.
That increase does not apply. To a single lot. The family, a single family home or lot for this purpose.
Yeah, I get that's what we're trying to say.
Okay, but is it saying it?
Saying it.
I don't know. We'll talk to the Mass General Law.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, let me just take a, I'll look at the statute and see if it gets interpreted anywhere and we can talk about it.
Yes, I mean, I think I'm trying to say, I agree, I'm trying to say, it's just.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's been three hours on a Saturday trying to figure it out.
Um.
No? And the attorney who's teaching you the course says, yeah, it's, it's really complicated. No one really knows the answers. Cool.
Any, uh, right, any other board? Anything else? Did you have?
No, no, I mean, I share your thoughts about the whole. Seems like, yeah, if it's within three, or if it's continuous use, I guess. But within three.
Use to do what you want.
Well, just expanding the structure.
Spreading the structure, yeah.
That'd be some, it's.
Yeah, all right, um. Any uh town officials have any questions or comments, Gene?
Yeah. June, June forty-nine, Dean, George, Floyd, from the. Uh, if your phone mentioned a house that's possibly abandoned, why no, there's several homes that are derailing. In Southwick, but a bylaw right should be condemned. Is there anything in this, in this regulation here that allows them now three years to do something to the home? And which would? Another blight exists, I don't think of one that's been here for ten years since I've been here. And I always thought it was abandoned, but it's not. And so curious if it's only, you know. Would allow that individual, somebody came in and said, oh, this place is not, certainly not con, conforming to a single family home. Can they use that uh to expiate for three years or?
Well, when people come in, and we just had one recently. To sort of, you, you have to have some evidence of, of. That it's been. Discontinued only for a certain period of time, right? And so. Um.
I'm talking about homes that are lived in now that by all means should be driven.
But that's a building aspect of it.
But could that person, as a result of zoning, saying, okay, well, I got three years, we'll try and take this down or?
Uh, no, no.
Cold violations are, would be addressed, I think, differently than this.
Yeah, 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 the enforcement is just entirely separate from. Any of this. Um, all right, any other? Um. Public comments? The only one on line was flipped, right, all right.
I want hold on.
Um.
He's probably sleeping anyway.
All right. Um, all right, so why don't we? We're planning on closing it and rolling down the next meeting, so let's spend some time in the next two weeks to kind of. Get our head around this and work this to a. Final place next time. Um, what is the next meeting work like?
Not crazy so far. Give me one second, hold on.
Have a good night, Gene.
Good night.
Oh, I don't.
I put in a seven.
We have a seventh.
Ten. So. Uh, you know, and, and, um.
And other continues.
Seven, seven.
You want to know, open it, right, then?
No, it's seven seventy-one. We'll probably go.
So, Rob.
I saw that. So I'm putting this at seven forty-five. Do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing at seven forty-five on April twenty-third?
Dave Spina so moved.
Take off singer.
Okay. Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Take off singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Fortin, aye.
Okay. Um, planning board member and staff comments?
Oh, I'm gonna actually back you up for a moment.
Yeah, we got a.
We have a, oh, yeah. Public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we got it, Rob.
Um, this will, that is, I believe, still tied up, so we should. Um. At least open. Not open until the, uh.
Oh, true, really, guy advertised, so I can't just.
Skip over and.
Fail on it. Uh, fair enough. It's a good point, you make.
You lost your part of it.
This doesn't, I mean, it's, we're not going to do anything, right? So it's, uh, who is the? Who was it? Who was the about it?
Ken Stevens, senior.
Okay. Um.
And I have a couple of comments.
Of course.
Um. Any notice?
Oh, yeah.
Seven thirty. So change petition two thirty, so on this street. Um. That was a public hearing. Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, seven thirty P M. Planning board time via Zoom and in the land use hearing room, four fifty-four College Highway. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter forty A, section five, that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday. April ninth, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty P M via Zoom at the Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway, Southwood Mass. To consider amending the Southwood. That's to the zoning map reference in section one eighty-five, five of the code. Of the town of Southwood by redesigning a portion of a certain part of land from Agriculture and Conservation District to residential zone R forty. Said real estate being located at two thirty-three South Limmer Street identified as Sessors Map fifty-six, parcel seven. A currently split zoned A C and R forty said land is recorded at the county registered deeds in book. Two four zero three six, page three sixty-four. Portion of the subject property proposed to be changed from A C to R forty of that land currently zoned A C is situated in the easterly portion. Of the property such that the entire property would be zoned R forty. Zoom information is provided. Details regarding the proposal may be reviewed by contacting the town planner, John Goddard, at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time designated by the authority chairperson. Stop with fighting. All right, so the applicant. Is unavailable right now, um. Are there any comments or anything that needs to be read in?
We have received no comments.
I was paying, anything from the board without hearing the application yet? Okay.
Yep.
Mister Phelps, public comments, since you are the only public.
Commenter.
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight, demo stream. Uh. The reading of this. Notice. Indicates the entire property. Will be zoned R forty. Uh. This parcel is two hundred and forty-six acres. In size, I think. Is that right, John?
It's substantial.
Piece of land. So. That second paragraph in the public notice. Portion of the subject property proposed to be changed from A C to R forty is that land currently zoned A C. As situated in the easterly portion of the property. Such that the entire property would be zoned. R forty. So I think they're only asking for. The easterly part where the campground is.
No, I think they're asking for the entire property.
Okay, so they're asking for the entire property.
Correct.
So I think the planning board should look or at least ask for. A build-out analysis, see how many homes. Could be built on that property, because if that zone is changed to a residential zone. You can build houses on sixty thousand square foot lots. So you're going from. An A C zone to a, a residential zone. So potentially. You could have houses right there on that. On that whole property.
Good luck building on those, but yeah.
Well, there's campground up there, you can probably build about.
Got a couple?
Uh, a few houses there.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So I guess the clarification is for the applicant to make sure that they want the whole two hundred and forty-six acre zone. Residential.
Yeah.
And I guess that's it.
Okay.
And, you know, what, what could be built there? Once it's residential, you can build houses.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Anything? Uh, else from the board? All right, do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing until? Eight P M. On. April twenty-third.
Dave Spina so moved.
Take off singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Take off singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Fortin, aye.
Okay. Now. Planning board member and staff comment? Read it over, right, so really. Fine. Guys.
Do we have?
I'm answering.
An, an update on the M tech composition? Um, from your end, because I watched the select board meeting last night and was just curious if you had. As well.
I did not watch the meeting last night. Where did?
Um, so. The. I interpreted it correctly, they landed on the same five. One, uh, member of the public as appointed by the select board. One appointment by the planning board. And then, um, select board member Gail threw out a novel new thing that I hadn't heard before, which was to have the. Third, um, public member be designated by the Economic Development Committee. Um, and there was repeated. Uh, calls for caution on the idea that the planning board being a five-member board versus the select board members. Three-person board was in effect making. Uh, a two-planning board member, uh. Nominations for the public if we went ahead with the joint. Appointment, um, idea. I would just like to say publicly on the record. And that I find it a bit offensive. To suggest that as a member of the planning board. My opinion when it comes to appointments and votes is monolithic with the remainder of my fellow planning board members. I would assume that the select board members would not want to have their opinions and votes. Characterized as monolithic either. Um, especially seeing as two of them were recently elected on the basis that the select board. Perhaps needs to have a bit more attention focused on them when it comes to appointments. To committees. So. With that in mind, I encourage you, Mr. Doherty, to continue advocating on our behalf when it comes to the epic composition and how we go forward in that.
Okay, so, um. Yeah, I don't think, um, and I'll listen to the meeting. I didn't get a chance to listen to it today. Um. I have. No. Agreement with having E D C appoint. Uh, E D C has. So little role in the master plan. I don't know why they would have. An appointment on the master plan invitation committee. Um. So.
Heard a discussion we haven't had.
Yeah, so I, I don't think that's. The way to go, um, but. Um, I, I guess the update that I would have on it is I talked to Mark Bedlam. And. So to the extent that it needs, it want, it's going to be independent and not a subcommittee, it needs to go to town meetings, so. Um. You know, I think. I have given to Doug a proposed warrant article. Would it be for this? I mean, I think I'm fine with. Even if it's under the select board, I think I'm fine with it just sort of being a subcommittee for a year and letting some, you know, seeing how it goes. And having someone's budget what's under and that, you know, whatever. That's fine. I don't mind. That, though I think I. I think I'm okay with that now. I think I disagreed with it at the time, but I think, you know, I think I'm fine with that now. It kind of makes sense. The. But I mean, I think the ultimate. Answer is that. We can't agree on something. Um, then someone's going to put it on for town meeting. Whether it's, I mean, you need, all you need is ten signatures. Put it on town meeting. So if Doug and I can't figure out something, then. We come up with our version and get ten people to sign it and put it on town meeting for the next town meeting. So, I mean, that's, that's how I, I mean, to me, it's pretty straightforward is. Although we try to work something out. Between us and the select board, but. Doesn't, just put it on town meeting and let it vote on it. Okay.
Sure.
I mean, the bigger issue to me, I mean, I guess. It should have seemed that they were going to get all fired up over that final member, but, um, the bigger issue to me seems. Like trying to define some scope now of what they need to do and I'm. And I guess it can be defined a little bit, but I'm, to me, it's a little bit like let them sort of figure out to. How they, how they. Want to accomplish things. I mean, I, I'm not sure I want to set too. Constrained of a. Goal for them. I mean, I, you know, uh, it's going to depend on who's on it. And what they want to do to some degree, but, you know, some basic goals of reporting back. Um. Reporting to town meeting, you know, those were ones from, I think, the town of Milton that I pulled. Where they had that, that makes, seems to make sense, you know, like twice a year you're reporting to the select board, planning board, you know, where they stand with the master plan, what, what we've done and what, that kind of stuff. And then be a liaison to those committees who are the lead parties and try to help them out. I would use them as a bit of a. Leader in order to get some of these things. To the committees and boards, you know, they can help draft. A warrant article or a proposed bylaw or a plan for something that can get implemented by one of these boards or committees, and they could help do that. The committees don't have time, right? So. Uh, you know, and you brought rush that, but I'm not sure you're going to put too much of a, it sounded like, I'm listening to those select board meetings, that they want to put a pretty. Tight constraints on what they can do and define their. Their. Path in a pretty narrow way, and I'm not sure. So I don't know. We'll see where that goes. But we'll try to, I mean, we can't just sit around with this thing, so we got to figure out.
Well, that's the everything is that it's.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, getting a little tired of this. Volley back and forth for power versus. Let's get it done and do what's best for the community as a whole.
So I will try to do something this week. Reach out to Doug and get that. Together and then maybe it can be. Finished up at the next select board meeting. Okay. All right, um. Any other member staff comments? Okay. Mister Sutton.
I make a motion?
We don't have minutes, so again.
Get me all worked up over here. Make a motion to close the meeting.
Dave Spina, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night.